Jim.
Dr. Miller, check your mic.
Testing, testing, testing.
I got used to my space.
So, I'm in the right place.
How you doing, neighbor? How you doing?
Yes, sir. Nobody wants to get a new phone. Oh, boy. It's Pixel 4A 5G.
Good evening. I call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, call a roll, please. Here.
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 Yeah.
Here.
Here.
We have an invocation by J. Lee Vogler Jr., followed by a pledge of allegiance. Ask everyone to please stand.
All right. Lord, we thank you for allowing us to come here tonight to work on issues of importance to our citizens and all people across our region. We ask for guidance and wisdom and patience and understanding, and that we will do things that are pleasing to you, Lord. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, want to say good evening to everyone here in the galley and everyone who's viewing us per video by Facebook. We have asked Lieutenant Antonio Hodges and his wife, Shawnee Hodges, to please come forward. Want to introduce them to the public and allow them, these are new leaders for our Salvation Army. Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you all?
Very well.
Please feel free to speak to the public and introduce yourselves.
Evening, everyone. I'm from Chesapeake, Virginia. First time in Danville. We're very excited about being here. Our goal is to be a strong advocate to the community and continue to help those in need, to really go after the youth and be a strong person for those who just need a place to come.
I'm Lieutenant Shontae Hodges. I'm the better half to this guy over here. Our goal is to hit the ground running, to feed the hungry, clothe the naked, and save the unsaved. And we just want to be a big asset to this community. So, we're here to help in any way. That is our true goal here.
Councilman Mayo.
Good to see both of you again. And Captain, it was good spending time with you, talking about your goals. And you and your wife are a great team. We definitely want to welcome you here in Danville and let you know that we're here for you at all times. So, welcome.
I want to apologize to you all. When Councilman Mayo invited us to take you to lunch, he could have took us somewhere else. So, I apologize. Councilman Campbell, I won't tell you where he took us at.
Glad to opportunity to meet you through the Rotary and that is a good support group there to work with some initiatives that you all are trying to do. Just so happy to have you here, you and your wife. I think she makes you look so good. You look so lonely when we was ever at the Rotary. Glad to meet you, ma'am. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Miller, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, we had the pleasure of meeting you at Rotary. I already knew who your better half was after meeting you. Just kidding aside, glad to have you in Rotary, glad to have you in the city. Thank you.
Well, again, welcome to the city. We owe you a lunch or a dinner. This time, I'll take care of it. But again, if you need anything, we'll be more than happy to be. We're here for you. Thank you so much again. Thank you all. Is Mr. Richmond Vincent, our new CEO of Goodwill, is he here? Well, he's not here tonight. Communications, anyone who would like to speak on any item that's not on the agenda may come forward at this time. Anyone who would like to speak on any item that's not on the agenda may come forward at this time. Good evening.
Good evening to everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to come and speak. My name is Joyce Cully. I am the Director of Career and Technical Education for Danville Public Schools. And I just want to give you an update on our internship program. The students have been working, and we are thankful to you for the collaboration with the City of Danville, our school system, and several other organizations here in the city. I have a special treat for you tonight in that Jayden Harris, who works in our Sheriff's Department as an intern, is here to provide for you his experience. Jayden?
Good afternoon. This has been a very educational and great learning experience for me within just working in general and seeing new things with, you know, just different people, different outlooks of Danville itself. And just with me being able to work in the Sheriff's Office, it's been a great pleasure. I've been able to sit in court, see what they do in there, and be able to watch the front door of security. And I've been in the control room for the jail even to monitor what's been going on down there at the jail. And it's been a great experience currently. And just with this whole program, I've been able to get more money to pay off college. And I definitely recommend more people to do this in the future.
Jayden, when you said, "I've been able to..." Jayden, Jayden, I'm right here. When you said, "I was able to get more money to pay off college," your family back there was just clapping. Stand up, family. Introduce your family to us, Jayden.
That's my mom, Toshi, right there on the right, and then my grandma.
Well, thank you all so much. Ms. Cully?
Jayden. And again, I just want to thank you all for the efforts that you have put in our youth. And we're hopeful that this program will continue next year. Thank you so much.
There are some questions. I see them coming. Councilman Mayo.
Yes, that's a great job you're doing there, Joyce. And I want to commend you. A young man, I wanted to ask him the question. What was one of your best experiences that you can, you want to tell us about that you have had in the jail?
Best experiences currently has just been being able to meet new types of people, really. Like, you know, like currently, like I've been seeing basically the same people for a few years of my life currently. And I went to the Sheriff's Office, met many new faces, and it's allowed me to, you know, expand my horizon, the people that are here in Danville and, you know, just a different type of people that you can meet in everyday life.
Councilman Campbell?
Anything else, what did you see that we could do to support what you're doing, initiative?
Not everything.
Both of you.
Everything currently has been a great experience. I don't see many other ways to really improve it. It's been a good way of, you know, being able to work and get your experience up currently.
I'm just thinking, Councilman, that as we plan for the future, that we can expand the program.
That's what I'm talking about, right.
And have more students. We were fortunate. This year, we were able to support about 27 students in the program. Everyone applying, we were able to place them. And I'm sure with the success we've had this year, we're going to have more students applying for next year.
That's what I'm talking about, right. Dr. Miller?
Yeah, I want to recognize our superintendent here tonight, Superintendent Harrison, and commend the Director of Jobs and Technical Education. A few years ago, that wasn't the most high-status job to have. Now, it's been catapulted to the top, you know, for desperation to train new workers coming out of schools, in high schools even before they finish. So, you're doing a great job. And this is job one right now in training students.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Jayden, we're going to invite, Councilman Saunders taught me this. We want you to come, your family to come, all the council members, Dr. Harrison, and we want to get pictures with you. Is that okay? Come on up here. Ms. Cully, thank you, and Dr. Harrison. I've heard so many and seen so many happy young people. We're still in communications. Anyone who would like to speak on any item that's not on the agenda may come forward at this time. Anyone who would like to speak on any item that's not on the agenda may come forward. Please come forward to the podium. And please state your name and your address for the record. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. How are you doing?
Doing great, thank you.
My name is Harvey White. And the item I'd like to speak about is the casino. It's being built nearby the area that I reside at. And I'm literally five minutes away. And I would like to know how this casino is going to affect our property taxes and property value. And, you know, I'm just concerned about that.
Well, first of all, thank you so much for being here. I'm going to yield to the city manager if he wants to address some of it now and meet with you after. This is our city manager, Ken Larkin. You can handle it any way you want to handle it, city manager.
I'm happy to speak to you anytime. My number is 799-5100 if you want to call.
We give it again because they're trying to write it down.
434-799-5100. You can email me at klarking@danvillva.gov.
You don't have to do that again because I think they're right.
K-L-A-R-K-I-N-G@danvillva.gov. But just basically, one thing I think the public should know is that the city's IDA has already engaged a consulting firm to work specifically in the Schofield neighborhood area to identify any concerns that might exist out there. So, we're hoping that will be a very public process, that people will participate in that public process. So, we hope you and your neighbors will pay attention to the announcements that we have. If you email me, I'll make sure that you get reached out to specifically about any events that are occurring, where you can provide whatever feedback you want to provide to that group. They'll be looking at, like I said, the Schofield area, specifically the Schofield neighborhood, with some very specific recommendations for people who live there and what can be done to make sure there's good quality of life for people out there. We're also going to be looking at the corridor that leads from North Carolina to the Schofield area, plus from the Schofield area down Main Street to the River District. So, there's, that's, that's an opportunity for you and others to provide input. But again, I'm happy to talk to you as well.
Mr. White, thank you so much. Did I do, was that okay?
Yes.
Well, thank you for being here and feel free to come back again. Thank you so much. Thank you. We're still in communication. Anyone else who would like to speak on any item that's not on the agenda, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Good evening, sir.
Gary Richardson, 35, 36, Westover Drive in Danville. Mr. W.T. Gatewood wanted to be here tonight to talk to you. And unfortunately, he was not able to. And so, he wrote his thoughts out in a letter and asked me to read it to you. "To Honorable Mayor and Members of City Council, the subject is closing the Westover branch of the Danville Library." It's from W.T. Gatewood. "The annexation of Westover Hills became effective midnight December 11, 1986. We had water and sewer services, a fire station, a school, police services, garbage collection, and a public library. We got streetlights and some asphalt paving from, excuse me, on some streets from the city. According to the annexation agreement under Section 5, it states that Westover Hills will have a branch library. The city did not build one as the agreement states, but the one that was leased was just as good. The city shut down the Westover branch of the library for over a year due to the pandemic. Most things are back to normal now, but the Westover branch of the library is not being reopened. This is a violation of the annexation agreement. Council knows what is right and what is wrong. I hope that you will reverse your decision to close the Westover Hills branch of the library. Please do not violate the promises made by the annexation agreement." And finally, he says, "I am just an old retired Westover supervisor that served for 12 years, just two years before annexation became effective. I am sorry I was not able to attend the meeting tonight. I do not think that my bad hip would let me do the walking and standing that I need to do to address you. Thank you and God bless our city, county, state, and country." And it's signed, "W.T. Gatewood."
Mr. Richardson, thank you so much. And earlier, I introduced you to the city manager, and you made that introduction. Councilman Vogler?
Yeah, first of all, thank you for coming and speaking tonight. And I know several council members have probably talked about this and had comments in the last couple weeks. This has come up in years in, in the past when we were going through some really tough budget times about closing that library. And I opposed closing it every time in the past. I'm still opposed to closing it. I've spoken with the city manager and staff, and I don't know if he's prepared to say anything tonight. But my understanding is, is we're working through a solution to keep library services at Westover, which I'm certainly in favor of. And I, I think probably most of the council is. But again, I want to reiterate that I am opposed to ending library services at Westover. And so, I don't want to put the city manager on the spot. But I do know that, that things are being discussed and worked on. I just want to let folks know that.
Well, to, to Councilman Vogler, the city manager spoke to Mr. Richardson, and he's planning to speak with us in regards to some of the comments that you made. Councilman Campbell?
Yes, I did tell what Councilman Vogler stated. And I don't know if Kim want to say anything or not, or just wait. But I know that there is a solution.
Yeah.
And we're working toward that problem. And I've already talked to you, sir. We're working on that.
So, Mr. Richardson, so you can tell our friend that there'll be a conversation in regards to the city manager and Parks and Recreation Director are going to be bringing some thoughts to the city council, and we'll be having a conversation. And I appreciate you being here tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much for taking our time to be with us tonight. We're still in communication. Anyone else would like to speak on any item that's not on the agenda may come forward at this time. Anyone else would like to speak on any item that's not on the agenda may come forward at this time. Under the consent agenda, council, what's your pleasure? Councilman Vogler?
Yes, Mayor, I move we adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Second by Councilman Mayo, discussion of the motion. Discussion of the motion. Madam Clerk, call a roll, please.
Buckner, Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Hood?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Mayo?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Under new business, under item A, consideration of the purchase of property for the expansion of the West Fork substation. Dr. Miller?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to propose a resolution authorizing and prove the City of Danville, Virginia to enter a purchase agreement, as well as the actual purchase of 42.85 acres of land at 581 Long Circle within the Danville Utility Service territory.
Second by Councilman Mayo, discussion of the motion. Dr. Miller?
Yeah, we talked about this in the work session. We're trying to purchase land for a fourth substation, which is desperately needed. It will serve up to a half of our city and county customers. It will provide valuable backup for the, the whole system. And it's something that's desperately needed. Thank you.
Lee?
I agree with Vice Mayor Miller. I, I'm a member of the Danville Quanis Club, and Jason came last week and did a fantastic job speaking to our club about the work that's been done in the last few years with, with the solar projects. And particularly, and I want to reiterate what he said that night and let folks know how important it is that we get more energy produced on this side of the grid. And so, this project certainly falls under that. So, the more energy that can be produced here in our own backyard will be beneficial to, to all of our ratepayers. And so, a project like this will certainly be welcomed, and I'm glad to support it here tonight. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, call a roll, please.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Hood?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Mayo?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Consider, under item B, consideration of canceling the August 3, 2021 regular meeting at Danville City Council due to National Night Out. Council, what's your pleasure? Councilman Campbell?
I move for adopting a resolution canceling the regular meeting of Danville City Council scheduled for Tuesday, August 3, 2021, and scheduling a special meeting for City Council on Thursday, August 5, 2021.
Second by Councilman Whittle, discussion of the motion. Dr. Miller?
National Night Out is back. Be there.
Anyone else? Madam Clerk, call a roll, please.
Mr. Hood?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Mayo?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle? Mr. Buckner? Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Under item C, consideration of granting a short-term extension of deadlines to River District Development LLC. Council, what's your pleasure? Councilman Hood?
Yes, I move to adopt a resolution approving and authorizing Grant River District Development LLC a short-term extension of the utilization deadlines for the fire station and the utility building properties in these center, in these certain real estate purchase options by and amongst City of Danville River District Development LLC and the Industrial Development Authority of Danville, Virginia.
Second by Councilman Whittle, discussion of the motion. Madam Clerk, if you would, call a roll, please.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Mayo?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner? Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Hood?
Aye.
Under item D, consideration of authorizing utilization of the city's fiscal year 2022 borrowing capacity to issue general obligation bonds. I open the public hearing. Anyone who would like to speak on this agenda item may come forward at this time. Anyone who would like to speak on this agenda item may come forward at this time. I close the public hearing. Council, what's your pleasure? Councilman Whittle? Is there a second?
Second.
First, Madam Clerk, first reading. Motion made by Councilman Whittle, second by Councilman Vogler, first reading. Under item E, consideration of requesting the Circuit Court to order a special election on the issuance of general obligation school bonds. Council, what's your pleasure? Councilman Vogler?
Yes, Mayor, I move we adopt an ordinance of the Council of the City of Danville, Virginia, requesting the Circuit Court to order a special election on the issuance of general obligation school bonds in the maximum principal amount of $141 million and authorizing such bonds. First reading.
Second by Councilman Campbell, discussion of the motion. Under Communications, city manager?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I thought I would just maybe educate the public a little bit on the last item that was up for first reading, and perhaps there'll be another opportunity, of course, at the next meeting to do this. But the reason this item is on the agenda is in relation to the 1% local option sales tax for school construction, which was recently put on the ballot by city council a few months ago, a few weeks ago. The reason it's, this is somewhat unique to Danville, where I think the only city that has had the option to do a 1% local option sales tax. In other cases, it's been counties. And by city charter, there are some debt limits that exist for the issuance of bonds. So, having this item on the referendum is necessary in order to be able to borrow funds for school construction using the proceeds from the 1% local option sales tax. And the reason borrowing funds is important, well, one, it's a good time to borrow. The interest rates are very low. But, two, there are a great number of needs in the community for schools' construction. The school board has identified a significant amount of buildings that need upgrade. And the ability to do all those upgrades as quickly as possible would have a greater impact on our students right now and those who are coming after them. So, rather than paying as you go and doing small construction projects as the funds come in, this will enable the school system to do a large number of projects and will impact the schools in a, in a better and quicker way.
Thank you. Deputy city manager? Thank you, sir. City attorney?
Nothing this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. City clerk?
Nothing, sir.
Call a roll, please.
Mr. Mayo?
Thank you, sir.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yeah, a couple of things. The city recently has ordered 15 new police cars, and these cars will be allowed to be taken home by police officers, so they can take them to their homes. And I can tell you, when I lived in Richmond, which is a little bit higher on the crime scale than Danville, quite a few decibels higher, we lived on a street in a duplex. And this was in a fairly high crime area. But the car, the duplex next to us, there was a car by a Chesterfield County sheriff. So, that car was parked on our street almost every night, right beside our duplex. We had no crime on our street. So, it made you feel good to have a police car there on the street. So, this is a very valuable thing we're allowing police officers to have, that will take the car home at night and if they live in the city. So, I think this is a very valuable thing. Secondly, you notice I'm wearing my mask tonight. This is sort of to tell you, we ain't out of this yet. COVID is on the increase. The variant is well in the majority. It's very contagious. One of our people I work directly with went to the beach. Nobody wears a mask at the beach in large crowds in North Carolina, came back. She's got COVID. She said, "It's kicking my butt." She's very, very sick. She had two vaccinations. So, remember, you're not 100% safe. The vaccine is 90% effective, 90 to 94%. It is not 100%. If you're going into an area where you feel a lot of people aren't vaccinated, and you can't tell, half the people you run into in this state are not vaccinated. So, if you're in an area where there's a big crowd, it behooves you to wear your mask. Take precautions still. You can get the COVID even if you've had the vaccine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Saunders?
I think, Ms. Mayor, I do have a question for the manager. But before I do that, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask the vice mayor to say a little bit more about this variance. We were told, most people were, if you had both of your vaccination, you would be okay. Now, I'm hearing that may not be necessarily so. So, I guess the question is, for people who have been vaccinated two times, should they, like you, also start wearing a mask?
I think you need to take precautions. Again, if you're going into a high-risk area, large crowds, you don't know who, say you're going to a ballgame or something like, you don't know who's been vaccinated. And you can predict that half the people will not have been vaccinated, and they're, they can be carriers. And even though you've had the vaccine, you can still get COVID. Now, suppose you won't be as sick as you would have been. This girl is very, very sick and almost hospitalized. And she's had both of two vaccines. So, it's not 100%. You still need to take precautions.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And one question for, follow-up question for the manager, if I may. The school bond, which people will be voting on, and I'm very positive about it myself, 143 million, I believe. And we're saying that if all of it is not used, the rest will go to pay down the debt. Is that correct?
I believe it's, I think it might be close to 141 is what I remember reading, but it's somewhere around that amount. And my understanding is that's an estimate. We don't really know exactly what can be borrowed until we go out for the bonds and we establish what interest rate is out there in the market. And then, we combine that with what the most recent estimates are for what a 1% local option sales tax will generate on an annual basis. So, it's somewhat of an estimate. Probably what we'll do is be conservative with that estimate. And then, if perhaps in any given year, we get more than is necessary to pay down the bonds, we could just either maybe pay down more principal, and looking at Michael a little bit to see if he can help me, we can pay down more principal on the debt, or we can do additional capital projects for the school system. So, it's, all the money generated from the 1% local option sales tax has to be used for capital projects at the school system. But it could be done for, you know, you know, if there's enough to pay the debt that year, you can do additional capital projects, or you can just pay down more debt. Those are your two options. But those decisions can be made, I think, on an annual basis as that information comes in.
Thank you for correcting me also. I thought I had seen 143, 141. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Right. I'm remembering 141, but it's, it's.
It's 141, 141.
141.
141. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. Vogler?
Thank you, Dr. Miller, for, for your comments. And I hope folks will, will listen. I also do want people, though, to, to, I don't want folks to hear that and then go, "Well, what's the point of getting a vaccine, then, if I'm going to have to do X, Y, and Z?" If you haven't
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Vogler?
Thank you, Dr. Miller, for your comments, and I hope folks will listen. I also do want people, though, to, I don't want folks to hear that and then go, well, what's the point of getting a vaccine then if I'm gonna have to do X, Y, and Z? If you haven't gotten a vaccine yet, again, it's your choice, but I would strongly, strongly recommend it. I've been fully vaccinated since February, I guess it's been a lot of us, and I haven't regretted it for one day, and it's allowed me to go out and feel a lot more confident. We're going on vacation this weekend, and I'm not going to be foolish by any means, but I'm looking forward to doing it, and life after vaccination is a lot better than life last year was, I'll put it that way. And I would encourage more and more folks, because I know there's a lot of people who still haven't gotten a vaccination yet here locally, but certainly statewide and nationwide, and it is possible. I mean, there are cases of folks who are getting this new variant of COVID even after they've had the vaccination. The difference between now and a year ago, if you look at the statistics, even as cases are starting to go up again, hospitalizations and deaths are substantially down from what they were before. So if you're vaccinated, you're not foolproof from getting any variation of COVID, but it does significantly reduce the likelihood that you'll be very sick, and so that's very important. And also, and again, you know, science changes, evidence changes, and people's understanding of things changes, but it seems to be believed at this point that if you're vaccinated, and even if you get COVID, you are less likely to transfer to someone else than if you were not vaccinated. So again, it's a personal choice, but for me, I got the vaccination and haven't regretted it one day. And lastly, Councilman Buckner wasn't here tonight, but he wanted me to pass along, and it's true. He is, he's working on a, with a economic development prospect at the moment that hopefully we'll be able to continue to do some good things here in Danville with. So that's what he's doing tonight, and that's why he's not here. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Miller?
Yeah, I didn't want to imply not to get the vaccine. You know, this whole problem could be solved. I don't feel bad about taking my mask off here, because I know everybody up here has been vaccinated. That's not the problem, it's people who haven't been vaccinated. And, you know, as you said, you can still get the COVID, and it'll be less severe attack, but the problem is people, there's so many people didn't get the vaccine. We'd be through and done with this mess if we had 90% vaccinated, but right now we have 50, so that means a certain number of people are still going to be susceptible. So you still need to take precautions, particularly if you're going to an area where you're not sure people have been vaccinated. Again, if everybody had been vaccinated, we wouldn't be talking about this right now. So we need to get those other people to get their shot. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Whittle?
Yeah, you know, I do like to thank all the police, fire, and rescue, our staff here. And so I got a call today from a state trooper, and he said, "Mr. Whittle, do you own a car hauler?" And I said, "I do." He said, "Well, I've got it out here on the side of the road behind a vehicle that's not yours." And I was like, "Okay, thank you." Jacked my car hauler. Somebody had taken my car hauler. And, you know, everybody gives all the time, you know, so I just think you just try to, you wrap all the folks around that are working inside and outside of the city, that, and everybody just does a good job when it comes to it, and I was, I appreciate what he did for me today. And, you know, is it possible we can put maybe in God we trust on those new police cars by any chance? Thank you, Miller.
Thank you.
Mr. Buckner. Reverend Campbell?
Yes, thank you. Very briefly, I just want to ditto a few things. So glad to have Superintendent Harrison here tonight, and I want to publicly say that I do support the referendum, the bond for capital improvements of the schools, and I just pray that all of the things that we'd like to see done, everything, the expansion, new buildings, fixing up track field, stadium, everything, let's make sure everything is in the package. That's all I ask. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Hood?
Yes, the only thing I would like to say tonight is, over the last couple of weeks, I've been visiting several community events. Last Saturday, I visited 10 in the day in the time span of a Saturday, and people really are working on something that Mr. Mayor spoke on several times, but collaboration. And you see Danville getting stronger and stronger about collaborating more, so that's always a plus to see.
Thank you. One of the 10 was, thank you for the event that you hosted Saturday night. It was a great event. Councilman Mayo laughed the whole night. He hosted a comedy show, and I keep up the good work, Brian. Jaden, could you stand up one more time? I just want to say thank you so much for being here, for being on council. One of the things, I don't think it's no secret, that I really like to see the young people involved in our community, and there are several things that you said tonight that really impacted me personally, to have a young person that come before us and told us that he's working in the jail. And you talked about your experiences in the jail, and the things that you're learning in the jail. And you wouldn't believe, as I was thinking about it as you were speaking, the number of lives that you were touching just by being there. I want to thank you so much for, one of the questions that was asked of you by Councilman Mayo was, what was your experience? What is the thing that stands out to you the most? And most young people could have said a whole lot of things that they experienced by being in the jail, and your response was absolutely phenomenal. So too, our city council, our city manager, our city staff, Danville Public Schools, and all of our partners. I have actually snuck in Dr. Harrison and Earl, and I wanted to see how these young people been doing at Goodwill at different places. I know where you all are at, and I've been sneaking in and having conversations with our young people, and I have thoroughly enjoyed it. And I've been asking some of the same questions. I asked some of the questions that we referenced, too. Do you all like to see this program come back again? And they said yes, and it wasn't just about the money. And then the way you all addressed everywhere I've been, and I'm going more places, I'm not going to tell you where I'm going, because I think the program's going to end soon, but the way you dress, the attire, the way you're carrying yourselves, I am thoroughly and thoroughly impressed. And I just want to say to the city council, thank you all. Thank you all so much, city staff, city manager. This is what it's about. This is what it's all about, the young people. So thank you to your mother and your auntie. Thank you all so much. And I look forward to, hopefully, city managers, superintendent, and all of our partners. I hopefully look forward to when the program is over, having all, as many young people and parents that are here in this area, so we can just say thank you so much, because a lot of times, to the parents, what we have heard for years, that we're not getting parental engagement, and that's changing in our community. Another way it's going to change is when we put this referendum out there, as Councilman Campbell stated, Councilman Saunders stated, we need people to vote on this referendum. We need to support our schools. I've said it many, many, many times. We have been thoroughly blessed, and we see all over the country what's happening, and we're not, I'm not going to predict it here, but our schools really, really need, really need this bond to pass. Our staff is working extremely hard, the school system, school board are trying to recruit, and are recruiting very hard, and to be able to recruit and see the buildings that we have, and our staff is working extremely, extremely hard. If you go into Langston Building upstairs, and F Building upstairs, and see that roof, and it caused many, and I won't go into it now, because you're going to hear me pushing this off from now into November, but I just want to say thank you so much to council, to Mr. Harvey White. I believe this is your first time here, and you brought Sam Fitzgerald with you. If you can help me, if the city manager, when the city manager's talking to you about your casino concerns, if you can help me to get Sam Fitzgerald to move back to Danville, he's gonna be okay. To all of you all who came here tonight, we just want to say thank you. Robbie, we're all, it's good to see you, Robbie, and thank you for everything that you're doing, superintendent. But we have some staff here. To all of our staff, I do this often, we got more staff here tonight, please stand. All of our staff, please stand. Let's give them a hand. We appreciate what you do. We sincerely appreciate what you do.